And we're going to open this video up. Four o'clock, I am recalling the Yelm Planning Commission meeting to order. It is Tuesday the twenty first. Twenty twenty three. I have a roll call, please, staff.
Commissioner Carlos Perez.
Here.
Commissioner Bob Howard. Um, he is excused. Commissioner John Graver.
Here.
Commissioner Richard Lomestale should be attending via Zoom. Commissioner Ann Warman should also be attending via Zoom. Jerry Fugic. Might be on his way still and Commissioner John Thomas.
Here.
Very well, we please stand and pledge allegiance to the flag.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Have everyone had an opportunity to look at last? Uh, month meetings?
As one heir. Uh, you have Arts Commission, John Thompson reported the Creative Arts District had taken around six hundred surveys and are waiting more than they could. I didn't do that, so I don't know.
Okay.
John Graver.
It was.
So you might make that change.
Yeah. All right, uh.
I'd make a motion, we accept them as amended.
Motion has been seconded, now minutes are approved. Now it's. Item number five. And staff communications.
Okay, thanks, sorry.
Sure.
We're a little concerned because we don't have a quorum.
We don't have a core.
Well, we haven't heard anybody announce.
See anybody on Zoom.
Well, then, uh, let's, can we pause for just a couple of minutes or?
Certainly, I mean, I could still go ahead and give you the, you know, until we get to the hearing, I don't think we're, we have a problem, but for a hearing, we're gonna need a quorum to make a decision.
Definitely.
So as far as staff or department updates, one of them is a staff update. Miriam has accepted a new position with City of Tacoma.
Oh.
Oh, no. I'm sorry. I'm leaving soon, my last day is Thursday of this week. It was a pleasure.
Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you so much, and thanks for trusting me and helping me in this journey.
Well, you're good.
Learned a lot from all of them.
You've done a really good job, I think.
Appreciate that.
I don't know what your boss thinks, but.
It's gonna be a big loss.
Yeah.
We're, we're now a department of one when we're supposed to be a department of three and going on four. So, uh, it's gonna be challenge, that's gonna be challenging, but no, Miriam. Has taken a lot of knowledge with her, so.
There comes one more, we got, we got Jerry coming, so.
And just joined online too.
Okay.
Okay, good, 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 I'm sorry, that's concerning by the skin of our chain. Your last one, you didn't want to be a failure.
Right, yeah.
You're just a quorum just.
So another update, because I did mention it last time, we are. We still have not signed the personal services agreement with the consultant for the comp plan, but it is now in and we're going to take it to council on the eighth of September. So that will get us going on the comp plan and development code. Sure.
And when, when will we start as a commission, start to? Start to participate in?
Let's build into the scope, having the consultant work the planning commission and um, the sort of ongoing thing, because the comp plan has several different elements to it, so. You know, you'll be seeing them numerous times over the next couple of years. We're supposed to have it done by June thirtieth of twenty twenty five. Uh, we have grant funding, uh, hundred and twenty five thousand, and then we're throwing in our, another couple hundred thousand for both the comp plan and the development code update. So that was one of the things that related, because the way the grant application was structured, we needed to break out the silk differently to make sure that we. Get all of our grant funds in both years, because you can't carry anything over from one year to the next. Uh, so we want to make sure we get that all spun up. And before these are spent all our money, I'm sorry.
Thousand for the.
For the grant.
For the grant, another hundred thousand was what?
There's another two hundred thousand, but that's for both the comp plan update and we're updating our development codes. So those are related to each other, it's good to do them at the same time if you can. Yeah, and we're also in the thick of our habitat conservation plan, we had a meeting on that today, it's starting to get more interesting, but that too is going to be folded into our comp plan updates and our development code. Because how, what we decide to do with the pocket gopher and how we regulate it and how we do permitting, it's all gonna be tied in together with all these other things. So. That's all I have for updates.
Anybody have questions, commission? All right, we'll move on to item, agenda item number six. Uh, public comments, if there's anyone in the audience that wishes to address the uh, commission, please, uh, you're limited to three minutes and your maximum of five people. You know that, so if there's anyone that wants to come up, uh, you come up to the podium or we don't have anyone on Zoom, and you have, uh. Minutes, I believe it is, yeah, three minutes to speak, is there anyone that wishes to make any comments on either today's agenda or something else?
Just a, just a point of clarification, are we able to speak under new business item eight? Is, are, is public comment allowed at that point, or do you need a public comment to be consolidated to this point in time?
I'm sorry, would you say that again, please?
I just wanna make sure, um, here in, with interest in. Item number eight.
Yes.
Uh, so is there public comment or discussion allowed during that portion of the planning commission meeting, or do I need, or do comments need to be provided now under item number six?
Well, you know, I'm not sure about that, I would think that, uh, you could address the commission after item number eight, or something you want to discuss that's under that item, so. We'll proceed to that, hold off a bit, that's all.
Yeah.
All right, uh, non-hearing, unheard, uh, we'll go on to item number eight, the new business. Staff, uh, do you have any new business to report?
No, sir.
All right, then, uh.
That was common. That is the new business.
You have no business.
Well, that's under, oh, a new, I'm sorry, I was thinking, unfinished business, yes, 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 I do have new business, yeah, that's number eight. Um, yeah, so I, coming back to you for, um. Seek your consent on something, and can you pull that map up? So as you will recall, we've, over the last year, I guess, maybe. Have numerous conversations, discussions and hearings about some annexations.
Yeah.
Um, I think we brought five of them before the planning commission a few months ago. Uh, planning commissioner recommended approval of all of them, we sent them to the Thurston County Boundary Review Board. And two of the annexations that we were proposing. Um, the boundary review board asserted what they called jurisdiction, well, Thurston County did, and what they. Wanted to do was to expand the annexation areas beyond what we had. Approved, which they had the authority to do, the county requested it, we concurred with it, because one of the things that it did was it brought in all of Morris Road. And then if you see the um, parcel at the very top there, that was added to the annexation. And what that accomplished was it made our, our city boundaries kind of more logical, because with that parcel not being in there, it kind of created an island. Area. Okay, so that's, I mean, that's not really the point of what I want to request tonight, it's just that. When this one got held up, as with the other one, um, we had received a request from Glenn Shornow, who's the, oh, you want to point it out, Cody, do you mind? I like putting him to work, yes. That's the property owner, uh, and the one adjacent to him are the two that initiated this annexation request, well, as the application was being processed. Glenn Shornow asked whether or not we could zone that R six. We'd already been processing it as R four. Um, and so that's what we initially approved it, uh, under. What I want to request is that we go ahead and, uh, process it as an R six. And we still have another hearing on this that's going to occur at the council tomorrow, so it will go through a public hearing process. But I wanted to alert you to the fact that we wanted to make that minor change. And that we wanted to take it to a hearing with the zoning being requested as R six. And the reason is because if we don't, then they're gonna come back in with a rezone application, and we're gonna have to go back through the whole process. And we would be recommending approval anyway, so it's just in the interest of efficiency, it'd be a lot better if we could just handle this through the council hearing.
I'm trying to get oriented as to, uh, this, the, the school is over here somewhere and. It goes down there, oh.
School here, Safeway.
Safeway's over there?
Yeah, this is the old, this is where the Spooner's Berry Farm is.
Right, okay, I see where we're at now.
Yeah, so, I mean, it's actually just related to the rezone piece of it, the, um. The, the council will have to decide whether or not they agree with what the boundary review board, because the boundary review board held hearings on these as well, we had four hearings. Um, and the council. Can either accept what the boundary review board has approved, or they have to reject it entirely, they can't modify it.
So what are we asking the commission to agree to, or?
Just, uh, to, rather than process, we do two things simultaneously, we annex it and we rezone it, because right now it's, uh, basically zone one unit per four acres, or per, per five acres. So rather than asking them to rezone it to R four, we want to ask them to rezone it to R six, and that's the request of the property owner.
Question for you. Yeah, I noticed you have Betty Alexander.
Yeah.
She's been gone for quite a few years.
She has, yeah, we looked into it, it's the estate of Betty Alexander. And I think that, uh, there are, um, like, two or three of her. Heirs, descendants, children, whatever, who live on that property.
What deal with the cutout from Morris Road that slipped going over to Bald Hill?
Well, um, I don't really know the answer to that, I know that Pat, our engineer, city engineer, um. Found that really interesting too. And I don't know, um, if it has something to do with. Well, I just really don't know.
That's, that was like it follows the roadway.
Yeah, I do know, that, that's actually what you're seeing that cut off there, city already owns everything north of that line.
Oh, okay, okay.
The blue that basically Thurston County wanted the city to take on Morris Road. From down to the extent of what you're annexing.
I think he's asking about that little triangle that's just sticking out there.
Yeah, that, that's right away, that's right away.
Yeah, that's right away.
Right away.
So he owns the north of that, county owns south of that. Right, that little spur.
All right, any further discussion?
Do I have to make a motion?
Any motions?
Okay, let me just read what this says here. Uh, move, move that, uh. Proposed zoning by Glenn Chernow properties from R four to R six. And when the, and its annexation of the property is approved by the city council, be forwarded for. Approval from the planning commission to the city council.
Is that, that also includes, besides his property, the other property becomes R six too, is that correct?
Would be, all three would be rezoned to R six.
Might have to be worded that way, because the way this is worded, it just says Glenn Sharno's property to R six, the way I'm reading it, it should be that entire annexation. Which should rezone to R six had.
So, yeah, amended mine would be to exclude, include the Betty J. Alexander, uh. Property.
Yeah.
I just told you, Lynn.
Cynthia Lynn, the property.
Properties. Yes, here are second.
My second.
All right, motion has been, uh. Forward and seconded to do what he said. No sense of me repeating it. Uh. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All of opposed, nays.
Motion has been. Brownies down to.
Pardon?
Pass the brownies down.
Oh, I will, I will. Uh, motion has been approved and passed, so, okay, you've got that.
Well, we'll take a hearing tomorrow and if council votes to adopt, then, uh, this one and the other one that the PRV, uh, weighed in on will be come affected on September first, so we annex.
Very well. All right, let's move on to, uh, oh, do we have any comments?
Went really well, thank you.
All right. Very well then, uh, next I will be. Opening the, uh, public hearing. What is item number nine? Today is Monday the twenty first, it is four sixteen in the afternoon. And the planning commission opens a hearing, propose text amendment for, I believe it is. Chapter eighteen point thirty nine. If there's any testimony and you'd like to come up and, uh, come to the podium in three minutes. To address, please give me your name and your address for the records.
Hi, uh, my name's Robert Sternoff, two fifty five Seventh Avenue South, Kirkland, Washington. A little bit further north from here. Uh, uh, first off, I'm gonna take a little bit of my three minutes, but thank you for your service, having served for nine years on a park board and eight years on a city council, I know what it takes to do what you do, and I appreciate it. In this case, I'm, I'm here regarding, uh, the, uh, proposed language addition, uh, my family has owned a property out on NPRR, the very corner of Canal and NPRR since nineteen eighty five. Believe we bought it from the Carton family, my father operated a company called Rent Your Processing in the city for several years until the railroad left. And, uh, he'd actually intended to redevelop that property, but due to no water and railroad not certainty, uh, it's, it's languished, so over the years. Uh, Shelley Badger, when she was here, had to meet with my father regularly, what can we do? And, uh, we've tried everything, I think the city has done a lot, the free trade zone and all is a great thing, except that in order to bring things in and assemble them, you have to get them out of here. And there really hasn't been any interest at all, uh, we keep paying the taxes on it, so, uh, one of the conditional uses or special uses is for assisted living, um. Which normally is retired fifty five over, so the proposal on this is just to expand to allow for potentially, uh, senior fifty five and over rental housing on the property. It may be a combination of both, uh, it may be, uh, my idea is to do a combination of single level and maybe a stacked. Uh, building, three stories tall that could be converted later perhaps, but just give us the opportunity to, 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 to try and develop the property, it is ten acres. Uh, so it's a sizable piece of property, access is not a problem, we've got access from two different roads, and, uh, we'd be a great neighbor for the auto wrecking yard. Uh, we do there, so, anyway, again, uh, I would, um, very much appreciate your consideration and your vote to expand that and. And any questions you have, I'd be happy to answer.
This is on the west side of, um.
We're, we're, we're in the city. Yeah.
Yeah, but I mean.
Yeah, I was trying to think it's. I get confused with the directions here, because nothing, nothing, nothing seems to be straight, sorry. That's very, so, so I guess we're kind of northwest maybe, or west?
You're, you're above the car.
Place, yes, we are above, we're, yes, we're, we're definitely above the car place.
Okay.
Yeah. So. And there is obviously residential development to the, to the north, to the, the west of us, further west, I guess, so. Okay.
Thank you.
Any questions from the commission? Commissioners?
No, 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 no.
All right, that being the case, then.
I would, possible, like, put a couple things into the record.
Okay.
Uh, first of all, this was properly noticed with a, uh, notice in the newspaper, and all property owners within three hundred feet were notified by mail. Uh, I don't think we've received any comments one way or the other about it, so, um, no, no one.
What's the annexation?
I'm talking about this.
The addition.
This, some proposed, uh, zoning. Okay.
No, this does not require any kind of a public hearing or anything, does it?
We're having it right now.
Yeah. This is it, I'm willing.
So, anyway, I mean, uh, it doesn't seem to, um, be, um. Anybody, does, you know, nobody seems to be opposed to it, and I do think that it's. Consistent with the other things that we allow as special uses, so we'll still get a level of review, it's not an outright permitted use, it's a special use. So there would be a, a level of review that we would look at, and, um, it also is something that I think would be, uh. Uh, helping us further along with our housing action plan objectives, to try to get affordable housing, you know, for a variety of types of communities. That's all.
Very well. I can tell you that, um, that is my two cents on this, is, having done real estate here since nineteen eighty four, um. That land that they've got has. Has not had any activity, I mean, there really is nothing. Going on there and, and keep waiting for a, uh, a situation where the trains are gonna come and go and take product, you know, I, I mean, I'm. I don't see that in the near future, you know, and so I feel bad, somebody's paying taxes and they can't use the property, you know, so that's my two cents.
I need to correct myself too, by the way, I just, you jolted my memory, so the mailings were actually, were actually for the annexations, because those are specific properties. Because this is an area, there's no real way to do the three hundred foot noticing, but we did notice in the newspaper.
And the website and free public places as well.
On the, uh, change here to, uh, eighteen thirty eight decimal zero three zero. Uh, shouldn't the last item be changed to J?
Two I's.
Two, got two I's.
Uh, yes, yeah, yes, we'll fix that, thank you.
No further testimony? Well, I will close the hearing at four twenty two. Thank you very much for your comments.
Need a motion?
To close the hearing?
No, no, to approve.
Oh. Oh.
Okay, I make a motion that. Change be. Made, or be approved by the planning commission. To, uh, chapter one eight decimal three nine. Par, so, paragraph one eight three nine decimal zero three zero, and add in. Item I. Senior fifty five years and older rental properties and change. The old item I to item J.
I would second that.
Very well, I have the motion to do what we've agreed to do and a second. And that is to add the item I to. Section eighteen dot thirty nine dot zero three zero. And do I hear, uh, for approval, J's?
Yeah, yeah.
Oppose, none? It is approved.
Uh, thank you. Thank you, so we do have to now take it, I mean, this is a recommendation to council to adopt, so we'll drop the ordinance and take it to council.
Well, now I will officially close the hearing.
No, you already did.
Well, I can't.
Close the hearing.
I close the hearing.
You have to close it before we vote, so.
Did you, quick point of order, did you get the vote for the two, uh, members online?
I don't, I'm here to vote. I'm not sure they're online, we have not heard them.
Um, I don't think they've said anything.
Okay. They're, then, you might have to promote them to be able to talk. Allow to talk, there you go, so they can act, they should actually vote on those.
They're both muted, they're very good.
And, can you hear me?
You're loud.
Okay, sorry, I tried voting, but apparently I was on mute.
All right then, uh, let's go on to another.
Get their votes if they're on.
Get their vote too.
Yep.
That's it.
Yay, yay on both.
Yay on both for me too.
All right, we will now move on to item agenda number ten.
The door, Charlie.
What was that?
I, I think she was talking to somebody else.
Oh. Uh, do we have any reports for the commission? Top community reports?
No, but we did, um. Therefore, John Graver. Um, as far as the, uh. The Arts Commission. Um, we did reach our one thousand, um, surveys, and so we are moving towards. Positioning. The, uh, the Arts Council. Not our Arts Council, but Washington State Arts Council for, uh, monies and projects, you know, for the city of Yelm.
And you have anything on the, uh, parks?
On the, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, good, okay, um, apologies that. You know, I was still trying with the technology, um, for the, uh, parks, I, I can tell you that, um. We've had some very, very successful events in the city park recently. In addition to that, uh, for the railroad that runs along NP Road. That has now, all the rails have been pulled up. And that trail, uh, the extension of the Yelm Prairie Line Trail, uh, is underway. And, uh. Due to be, um, the designs due to be finished soon, and will be constructing, uh, into the fall, uh. And hopefully we'll open the new trail all the way to the river, uh, by early next year. Um, so. If those that are, had been talking about waiting for rails to, uh, restart for transporting from the industrial section, um. There are no more rails, those have been removed. And the trail is, um, uh, will provide, um, non-motorized, um. Non-motorized does potentially include electric bikes these days, uh, by the way, but, um, uh, non-motorized, um. Uh, usage for a variety of different, uh, modes of transportation across. And it eventually will be able to go across the river, um, but that'll be a few years yet to have that happen.
No, thanks for bringing that up, Ed. No, thanks for bringing that up, Ed.
All right, uh I do have one, so uh do we have any update on uh the development over in Tacoma? Remember we were talking about? Yeah.
Um well, I'm going to take it to the hearing examiner on the twenty-first. Um they are required to do a gopher survey. So we're, you know, we're pending the outcome of that. If it comes up negative, then the, they should get hearing examiner approval for the amendment. It's not a new thing, it's amending an old thing. Uh I would guess, say we get hearing examiner approval, we're gonna recommend approval. So you know, by the beginning of, beginning, the middle of October, they should get approval. The only thing I say I want to emphasize, this has been coming up fairly frequently lately, and that is gopher soils and gopher mounds will hold up a project until we have a habitat conservation plan, either one done by the city or the applicant does one individually, so. It's a kind of a concern about timing.
And the other thing I wanted to bring up was, I saw in the paper that about the uh YMCA of being considered. There, there, there was a talk here. How does that meld with the uh, the education building that we were, had proposed years ago?
So that's gonna be a Cody, cause I have.
Um so the Education Innovation Center, we got funding, we have a completed design. Um the council and mayor have to decide what they want to do and direct their forces wherever they want to direct them. Right now, the forces are directed towards YMCA, so the Education Innovation Center is on like the back burner. Um that's not, that's a council and mayor decision, so it's whatever they decide to do if they want to proceed with it or with the YMCA.
Uh is the YMCA a replacement of the education building?
To some it is, um that's, it's up to them what they do. That's all I can say, cause it's not, it's out of my hands. So mayor and council have to decide what they want to do. So that's where we're at now.
Yeah, all right, thank you.
Okay. I don't know if this is something to bring up here, or maybe cause Anne's online. Um but I've heard that the uh, there may be a shutdown of the barbecue rally because of fire, because they have open flame. And they don't, it's not gas, it's.
Yeah, charcoal.
Anyway, I've just talked to someone who does a lot of volunteering and and he said that they're talking about some two never have been allowed during our of fire times.
Are you going for, for next year?
No.
This year.
Already done?
No, they've already done the barbecue. There are possible concerns, uh because we used to have open fire pits at uh Christmas in the park. As, and so that is not gas, it's uh, you know, it's open fire with, with logs. Um and we have not had those for a couple of years since the new irrigation system was put into city park. Um but we will have a brand new stage in city park for being able to support a lot of the events that we have. But I haven't heard of any, any problems with the uh barbecue um rally. And um uh but, but Cody's there, apparently. He would, he would know even better than me.
All right then, wait, finally, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Make this motion and we adjourn the meeting.
For a second. All those, in favor, say aye.
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 Non-heard, this meeting is adjourned.
All right, thank you.
Now I can eat my brownie.
There you go.